Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting to order. Everyone is present. I would note that today is the Ides of March, and so I think in honor, I hope everyone had a Caesar salad.
Surely Caesar.
Something, just something more serious, the moment of reflection and respect. Earlier today, a workplace accident took place within the town of Elmer to claim the life of an eighteen-year-old male. For the moment of reflection and respect this evening, I would encourage members of council, staff, and all those viewing the meeting to think of the family and friends of the deceased, as well as the first responders that attended the site of the accident this morning. In addition, I would like to recognize the seventeen years of service to the county of Elgin by Mayor Duncan McPhail of West Elgin, who was also an Elgin County councillor and a warden of Elgin for three terms. He passed away this last Saturday in his sixty-ninth year. Let us all reflect upon these two if we can. Thank you. The first item is the confirmation of the agenda, and I believe we have an addition. Josh?
That council confirms the agenda for the meeting of March fifteenth as amended by adding the following item, and that's item eight point ten, and that respects Report Clerk twenty-three twenty-three entitled Earth Corporation Special Shareholder Meeting Voting Representative and Council Attendance List.
Heard the resolution. I could have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Deputy Mayor Barber, seconded by Councillor Chapman. Any discussion on this since we have? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, now we need a resolution to recess and commence after the Committee of Adjustment. Josh?
That council do now recess and commence a Committee of Adjustment meeting at seven oh two P M.
Mover and a seconder, Councillor De Rosier and Councillor Rahi. All those in favor? Yes, carried. And we are now in Committee of Adjustment. Josh?
That council do now commence a Committee of Adjustment hearing at seven oh three P M to receive input from the public with respect to the report Plan Ten Twenty-Three, Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Minor Variants, File Number A zero three twenty-three, respecting property known municipally as Ten Spruce Street East. My apologies, Mr. Chair. I didn't need to read that one out. We're in committee and we're good to proceed.
Okay, very good. So we need to proceed and usually we go through the receiving input in the following order?
Yep, I'll read this out.
Okay, go ahead.
The Committee of Adjustment of the Town of Elmer is convened to consider Application Three Twenty-Three. Additional information relating to applications is available for inspection between eight A M. and five P M. weekdays at Elmer Town Hall. Signed written submissions are accepted by the Secretary Treasurer prior to or during the hearing, and such submissions shall be available for inspection by any interested party. In addition, if a party who is notified does not attend the hearing, the committee can proceed, and the party is not entitled to any further notice of hearings. Submission or request for notice can be sent to clerks at town dot Elmer dot O N dot C A. A copy of the decision will be mailed to those persons who attend or who are represented at the hearing, and those who have filed a written request with the Secretary for notice of the committee's decision. The committee will receive input in the following order: presentation of the staff report by the manager of planning and development, the agent or applicant, the public, and finally, staff and the clerk. Application Two Twenty-Three, apologies, Three Twenty-Three, is made by Ava Dyke as owner of the property known municipally as Three Thirteen John Street South in the Town of Elmer, represented by Trevor Benjamins of CJDL Limited. The purpose of the minor variance is to fulfill a condition for an associated severance file, number E twenty twenty-two, for a residential infill parcel. The proposed severed parcel contains an existing single detached dwelling and a detached garage.
I think I'm finally with you right now. Okay, thank you. Could the manager of planning and development please provide the report?
Thank you, your worship. The subject lands are zoned residential type one A, R one A, in the town zoning bylaw. The variance will reduce the following R one A zone provisions for the proposed severed parcel. One, the required minimum lot area from four hundred and fifty square meters to three hundred and fifty-six point eight seven square meters. Two, the minimum front yard depth from seven meters to six point six one meters. And lastly, the rear yard depth from seven and a half meters to six point six three. Property is located on the southwest corner of Spruce Street, Spruce Street East and Murray Street. And you can see that in figure one, as well as the existing property and the proposed lot to be created in figure two in my report. The application was circulated internally and to all applicable commenting agencies. No comments of concern were received internally. No comments of concern were received from applicable commenting agencies at the time of submission of this report, as well, no comments were received from all neighboring property owners at the time of submission of this report. And I can also comment further that as of this hearing right now, no comments have been received. Moving on to analysis within my report, Section Forty-five of the Planning Act allows a municipality to grant a minor variance to a zoning bylaw based on the four tests. First test, does a variance maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan? And for this application, it does. The property is designated low-density residential, which provides, which permits, single detached, semi-detached duplex and converted dwellings. The proposed minor variance to reduce the lot area, front yard depth, and the rear yard depth does not contravene the official plan policies. Second test, does a variance maintain the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? And yes, it does. It's important to note that the intent of providing minimum lot area requirements is to ensure there is a large enough area on the property for a suitable building envelope, in addition to providing areas for open space, outdoor amenity area, parking, and drainage and grading areas. The intention of providing a minimum front yard depth is to promote a consistent building line, excuse me, and to provide for adequate separation from the street and support of public safety. And lastly, the intent of providing minimum rear yard depth is to accommodate a deck on the rear of a dwelling and provide adequate separation distance between dwellings and accessory buildings that back onto each other. I can conclude that the proposed reduction to the minimum lot area, minimum front yard depth, and the minimum rear yard depth meet the intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw for this application. The third test is the variance requested desirable for the appropriate and orderly development and use of the lands and buildings, and yes, it is. Facilitating development of appropriately designated and zoned lands for residential infill is desirable for the Town of Elmer, and it represents sound land use planning. Development of the lands with marginally reduced lot area will not compromise existing development pattern or the neighborhood character. The deficiencies in front yard and rear yard depths are existing due to the age of the existing dwelling on the property. I am of the opinion that the variance will facilitate an appropriate use of the land. And the fourth and final test is the variance considered minor in nature, and yes, it is. It's more important to not look at numbers, but to look at the, base a test on the degree of potential impact on neighboring property owners, the environment, and municipal county or provincial functions. And the impact from the proposed variances is minimal with respect to the environment, municipal functions, and surrounding property owners. Recommendation is that application for minor variance A zero three dash twenty-three requesting relief from the specific provisions outlined in this report of Section Six, Section Six, subsection three, zone requirements for residential type R one A zone be approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Heather. Is the applicant or agent present? If so, do you wish to speak to the application?
Good evening. My name is Trevor Benjamins. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Hi, I just want to say thank you to the Committee of Adjustment for hearing our application for minor variance this morning. I wanted to also thank the Town of Elmer planning staff and Heather James for the favorable report, and I can also answer any additional questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could the clerk confirm whether or not any members of the public wish to speak?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There have been no members of the public that wish to speak to this application.
And I thought I heard Heather say that you had not received any additional communications.
That is correct.
Discussion from council? Questions or comments? Very well, with no further discussion, committee will now consider the following resolution. Can you read the recommended resolution, Josh?
That the Committee of Adjustment for the Town of Elmer receives Report Plan Ten Twenty-Three entitled Planning Evaluation Report, Application for Minor Variants, File Number A zero three twenty-three, respecting property known municipally as Ten Spruce Street East, and that application for minor variance A zero three twenty-three seeking relief from Section Six Three Zone Requirements for Residential Type One A, R one A zone as follows: One, minimum lot area of three hundred and fifty-six point eight seven meters square for the proposed severed parcel; Minimum front yard depth of six point six one meters for the proposed severed parcel; And three, minimum rear yard depth of six point six three meters for the proposed severed parcel be approved; And that the Committee of Adjustment, of Adjustment direct administration staff to provide confirmation to the Elgin County Land Division Committee indicating fulfillment of Application E twenty twenty-two, Condition One, as noted on the notice of decision dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, upon conclusion of the appeal period associated with this application.
I don't believe I asked for a mover and a seconder for this resolution. That Josh has read, correct? I haven't asked for one. Moved by Councillor Ozlach, seconded by Councillor DisRosier. Any discussion on this? All those in favor? Yes, carried. Thank you. We have a resolution to adjourn the committee meeting?
That the Committee of Adjustment meeting does now close, and council reconvene at seven twelve P M.
Mover and a seconder, Councillor Van Rees and Councillor Rahi. All in favor? Yes, carried. Thank you. Turning to the council agenda, item six point one, I believe, regular media, adoption of council and committee minutes. Do we have a resolution for that?
That council approves the following minutes: Regular meeting of council held on March first, two thousand twenty-three.
Mover and a seconder, Councillor Chapman and Deputy Mayor Barber. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yes, carried. Item six point two, minutes to receive. Josh?
That council receives the following minutes: Meeting of Elgin County Council held on February the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and special meeting of Elgin County Council held on February the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
I do a mover and a seconder, Councillor DisRosier, seconded by Councillor Van Rees. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Consent agenda?
That items seven point one to seven point four of the February first, two thousand twenty-three consent agenda be received for information.
There'll be motion, I just. Delegation to be, didn't have a declaration, okay. All right, not going on tonight. The mover and seconder for the consent agenda, Councillor Ozlach and Councillor, didn't see a seconder, Councillor DisRosier. All right. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And I was just reminded that I didn't ask for a declaration of pecuniary interest for this council meeting. Sorry, Councillor Van Rees.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. In accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, I, William Van Rees, have a pecuniary interest with respect to Ten Point Three Point One, by law to authorize signing of an agreement for crossing guard services. I therefore declare a disclosure of pecuniary interest and in general nature thereof as follows: I am the owner of inclusive communities. I do therefore agree not to take part in any discuss, take part in any discussion of or vote on any question in respect to that matter, and shall not attempt in any way, whether before, during, or after the meeting, to influence the voting on any such questions.
Thank you very much, Councillor Van Rees. And now we go back to item seven, I'm sorry, item eight point one, Director of Financial Services, the operations budget.
That report Finance Five Twenty-Three, respecting adoption of the two thousand twenty-three operations budget, be received for information, and that council approve the proposed two thousand twenty-three operational budget with a levy impact of six million five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and further that staff be directed to present the final budget bylaw for adoption at a future meeting.
Mover and a seconder, put this on the table. Councillor Shorty, Councillor Chapman. Is there a report on this?
Heather. So the Director of Financial Services will present the report, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, Heather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and to members of council, the final budget you have in front of you this evening shows the final requested changes by council at the last meeting. We really appreciate council's contribution to this budget this year for the creation of it. So in summary, council directed the following changes to the budget, which are included in the final document: one-time reduction of ninety-three thousand from contributions of, contributions to reserves in two thousand twenty-three, one-time hundred thousand dollar contribution from council initiatives reserves to offset the levy for the year of two thousand twenty-three. So with council's approval tonight, this achieves a target of five point eight two percent levy increase for two thousand twenty-three. Approximate tax rate increase is five point oh seven percent. And regarding the bulk waste pickup, the hours of the bulk waste pickup, or sorry, the hours for bulk waste are based on the time it takes for the contractor to perform the duties. So because this came up in the budget survey and the town residents appeared to support maintaining this level of service, we would like to defer any of those changes to the program until two thousand twenty-four budget year. And that's all I had for this report.
Okay, council. Councillor Ozlach?
Yes, your worship. I'd like to commend Heather for doing such a great work on the budget. It was a hard budget to do, and I, I feel for you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. I believe that the, the budget maintains a high level of service that the people of the Town of Elmer are accustomed to, to receiving, and for the most part, that is going to continue. As well, it, it doesn't further encumber the budget for two thousand twenty-four by kicking things down the road. And I also acknowledge the work of staff and of the members of council to strike a balance between the needs and the wants.
Good. Thank you for that comment. Anyone else? I certainly would want to add to the two comments that were made in developing this budget. It had to be very difficult to present a budget to council, starting at nine some percent, and then to have the council take a look at it. So I commend the staff for really working hard on developing the budget in the first place and then finding ways to bring it down four percent. It's a great, a great achievement, I think, by council, and certainly kicking items down the road doesn't work at all. And so I agree with that comment. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Eight point two, Director of Emergency Services. Josh, you have a resolution?
That report Fire Five Twenty-Three entitled Purchase of Hydraulic Rescue Ram be received for information, and that Elmer Council approves the sole source purchase from the municipal emergency services in the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars plus applicable taxes for the supply of one Hurst hydraulic rescue ram, which includes two batteries and charger unit to the Town of Elmer Fire Department.
Thank you. Mover and a seconder, moved by Councillor Van Rees, seconded by Councillor DisRosier. Usually, Fire Chief McCone would be making this report, but he's otherwise engaged tonight in a major fire, so all, all the comments to him, all the positive comments of what he's doing right now. Are you going to take over the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a report seeking sole sourcing for the purchase of this. This is consistent with our ongoing approach to move away from the hydraulic system to a battery-powered system. So it's kind of consistent with the overall direction that the fire department's going on. And certainly, tools like this help our firefighters outdo the things that they're doing this evening.
Thank you. Council. Councillor Van Rees?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As a former volunteer firefighter who's used this equipment, I support the purchase of, of this, moving to a battery-powered system. It gives you more ability, the, the ability to move around an emergency scene, whether it's a vehicle accident, or if they have to use something that, scene like they're at right now. You're not limited by the hose attached to the truck. So I've used it. I see the benefit in it, and I think it will just add another tool that's going to help our volunteer firefighters do their job. So I, I would support it.
Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question. Is it reasonable to assume that the present hydraulic unit will be kept in service as long as it's working properly, and that significant funds would not be used to, to keep it going when we do have the, the movement toward the electrical unit? Would that be reasonable to assume?
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, that is correct, and we'd.
When we look to divest ourselves, we have a policy that requires us that we have to sell it on gov deals.
If, if we did. So when we, whenever we dispose of equipments over, I believe it's two hundred dollars, we have to utilize that process.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion? That is carried. Thank you. Manager of Parks and Recreation, report, Josh?
That report Rec Two Twenty-Three, respecting Parks Implementation Strategy Two Thousand Twenty-Three, be for information, and that council endorsed the proposed strategy in principle and direct staff to circulate to the Horticultural Society and Elmer Business Improvement Area for further comment.
Mover and a seconder, Councillor Rahe, sorry, and Councillor DisRosier. Report?
Good evening, good evening, your worship, and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this report. This report's going to focus on service level standards in, in turf, horticulture, and aquatics. As council has seen in this report, two thousand twenty-two brought challenges, but it also brought opportunities for staff and council to receive input and address those challenges with positive outcomes. Staff is presenting a strategy and a roadmap that shows the service standards for beautification and other related maintenance matters. The time and task summary, which is in your package, provides council with a breakdown of the equipment, and equipment used and staffing. This will also tie into the maintenance overview that's in the package as well. When, when reviewing the time and task summary, the times do not include loading and unloading, refueling, breakdowns, or travel time, only onsite operational times. And the time is always based on best-case scenarios for weather and turf conditions. So if council could please refer to the two thousand twenty-three Parks Maintenance Proposal, starting on page three, I'd like to start with turf maintenance and just go down each category. We can talk about the time and task summary. And with this, the time and task summary will be helpful to see the equipment and staffing level for each category and task. So. Pardon me? Okay. So under, under lawn mowing, this, this is the bulk of a, a service delivery, and this breaks down to a hundred and three hours per week. So as, as council can see, that's a, that's a, that's a service level driven by, you know, the way we manage turf. Under trail maintenance, the maintenance that we provide is four hours overall, and that's for spring and, spring and fall maintenance. That's the trail being swept. Wastereptacles, I've grouped that in with the downtown core maintenance. Bathrooms and pavilions, that's also grouped into downtown maintenance as well. So, staff will, or council will see pools and splash pads, that's thirteen hours per week that we spend on those activities. Baseball diamonds, we're spending twelve hours per week. The downtown core, we're spending thirty-four hours per week. And weed control and municipal gardens, we're spending eighteen hours per week. And just for council's information, we did some targeted chemical applications, and that was twelve hours for the summer of 2022. I'm happy to answer any questions council may have going through any of the maintenance overviews.
Are you open for questions right now? Yes.
Yes, please.
Councilor Ozilage.
Yes, your worship. There's still bindweed on the north rock garden on Bellmore Park. There's still bindweed?
Through you, your worship. There is bindweed, but we have it kind of under control. That's been targeted through the chemical application.
Because I tried to weed that years ago, and it's difficult. Those roots go thirty feet in the ground.
Yes.
So, the trail, the, the street behind myself, my property, the, you cut it twice, twice a year?
Are you referring to the easement behind your property? Yes, that is, that's maintained at a two-times-per-year cut.
By the way, the sign is down on the east end. Somebody stole the sign.
Thank you. So, the object with the maintenance review is just to provide council with that, that level of service that, that staff put in for each one of these activities. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions with you.
Any other questions? Councilor Rahe.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Tom.
I, back to the trail maintenance, I see that there's some talk about doing some winter maintenance to it, which I, I would love to see. I think that's a great idea, so that's it.
Yes, through you, your worship. I understand through the REC master plan, there could be some, some changes coming out of that as well, so with increasing...
Councilor Ozilage.
Yes, your worship. Will the sign be replaced at the end of the, on Queen Street? Will the sign be replaced? Somebody stole the sign.
Through you, your worship, to Councilor Ozilage, yes. I'll coordinate with Public Works, and we'll have a sign replaced.
Okay. Okay, thank, were you going ahead with something else, Tom?
If nobody had any further questions, your worship, I was just going to finish off my, my summary.
Certainly.
So, staff is also included in your package. For council's information, the beautification plans for the Senataph, Town Hall, Palmer Park, the old Town Hall, Ballmorel Park, Lyons Park, and the living garden, and the proposed planning materials for each of those areas. I wasn't going to go through each area, your worship, just, it's in the package. I was just happy to answer any questions.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. To Tom, how did you come up with the various species of plants?
Through you, worship, to Deputy Mayor Barber. It's been through trial and error, some consultation, looking at the varieties, the hardiness of some of those plants, and just general research as well.
Have you tried supplementary? Have you tried the majority of these, or are you going farther afield on some?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Barber, we are going to try some of these, and some of these have been proven in other areas, so we are going to move ahead.
Thank you.
Councilor Chapman.
Through you, your worship, to Tom. You mentioned about changing to perennials, that it's not so much about the look as the hardiness. So, when we're looking to beautify, there are perennials out there that are still beautiful. So, I just don't want to see switching to perennials just because they're easier. We still want the parks to be beautiful. So, I guess that's my concern, is that I could see that complaint, that there's been things put in place because they're easy. Easy's not always the answer, and I, I understand that they have to be watered and things, but perennials don't have to be watered the same as annuals, and there are some beautiful perennials that are low maintenance. So, when I read that, I just kind of thought, how do you get the, decide on the ones that you have? Who do you consult with when it comes to deciding what will be planted?
Through you, worship, to Councilor Chapman. I'll consult with another, some of our staff members. One of our staff also has a horticultural background. I'll consult through books, research, different garden centers, some of our, our corporate peers, other municipalities as well, so.
Councilor Rozier.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to make a comment as well. I, just to advise council, I did have a meeting with Tom specifically about this report with my own questions and my own concerns, and I'll just summarize them very briefly here. So, specifically incorporating more neutral, low-maintenance plants to the park gardens, so to follow up from Jamie's comments, plants that I didn't see on the proposal that I thought would be, you know, low-maintenance, neutral, and easy to maintain down the road. Plans to remove invasive plants, weeds and overgrowth, introduction of decorative mulch, more frequent sweeping of trail system, implementation of routine street sweeping in the E E C C parking lot, inquiry to the E E C C entry island garden, and plans to rejuvenate the island. Tom was very receptive and, you know, thought a lot of the comments and suggestions that I made were good, so I did give him a list of potential plants for him to resource as well, so I just wanted to let council know that I...
Okay, thank you very much for that comment. Did you want to add something, Rob?
I think one of the important aspects of your report is the service level standards. This is the service level that council establishes is what's, what's in this report that our staff are going to, are going to adhere to. Council sets the standards, we're going to go there. You can see from Tom's report, a large part of his workforce has contributed to grass cutting. There's a hundred hours a week on, on grass cutting. It has to be maintained to service the sports fields, service the passive areas, and each one is listed as a different level of service in that package. So, if it's an active sports field, there's a, there's a criteria by which they cut the grass to make sure it's safe. Passive area, you could see in the spreadsheet it's cut less frequently. You can also see that we've allocated four hours for trail maintenance, so that's, that's not a lot. That's once, twice a year, I should say, we sweep it, we look after it, make sure it's safe. There's, there's a lot of time being spent in the downtown core. Your thirty-four hours a week beautification of your downtown core, that's your plants, your water, as opposed to you look at the municipal gardens, you're like eighteen hours a week. So, eighteen hours doesn't give you a lot of time in those gardens, but I understand discussions last year, that's where council was receiving some of their comments. So, this is where the time has been allocated, and we want to present that to council and say, this is what's going to be the standard. So, if you do get those comments this year that, hey, the downtown looks great, but the parks don't, we only have a certain amount of full-time equivalents that we've allocated time for, and when you break them out and look at everything, this is where it kind of falls apart. There are times that Tom does catch up, so for example, in August, when there's no grass to be cut, we can catch up maybe in some of our parks, those are reallocated resources. There's also some times that we fall behind, when we lose our student labor out cutting grass in September, it's all hands to kind of keep the grass maintained. So, I just want to kind of point those out to you. There's a lot of things, but there's only so much time, and if council wants to rejig this, this is sort of the report. Are you happy with how everything kind of falls out? Or if there's anything that council would like us to look at, we can always come back and say, we can, you know, reduce our service levels on grass cutting. It will mean those passive parks maybe get cut less frequently. Those would be affected to those people that are instantly around those, the landowners, but not the general people around. So, that's kind of the overview. I probably should have included a, like a general summary, grass cutting is a hundred and three, because we've got those hours, but we did more of a detailed breakdown, if you will.
All right, okay. Thank, thank you for that comment, Rob. I'm just kind of reminded that, you know, committees and councils deal with governance issues, and normally, we don't get down into the weeds, to make a pun here, kind of, you know, which we're doing is kind of getting down into the weeds. We have to leave the weeds to the people who do them. So, council's here to make policies, as Rob has kind of reminded us to do. So, we have any further comments? Councilor Rahe.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Rob and Tom. Is there a piece of equipment that would help reduce the time in cutting grass, such as instead of a zero-turn mower, like a batwing mower behind, in the large areas, in the large parks, where you can, where you have the maneuverability to break down large sections of grass and then tidy up the corners with zero turns and such? Is that a possibility to look into, or your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think we've got fairly well-staffed and equipment. I think that we have a mower that's fourteen feet wide, I think, so there's...
There's that attachment.
But it being in kind of that low-lane area to get that trackless in that ways?
A lot.
A lot, it's pretty tricky, right?
Yeah. I would say where, where we would look for guidance from council are the service level standards. If there are efficiencies with, you know, equipment and stuff, then we'll be back to council. I know there's a tractor also being looked at sometime in the future on the, on the budget as well, that's got to factor into that conversation. But if there's areas that council would like to see us re-look at or examine or come back with some, we'd be happy to do that as well. This, this report, as it says, will be circulated to...
Okay, let's, you know, again, Rob is reminding us that if the service level standards that we want to adjust, that's one of the things we should ask for a report down the road. Is that what you're looking at, or you have a comment on this, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, worship, and following up on your comments, council really isn't out there to know whether the grass or the beds need work. The frontline people are the, the park staff and you folks. This may be a place to start, but if it has to be tweaked, I don't think you should be bringing, looking for direction from us, you're going to change the standard in a further report, okay? But it's a place to start. If it doesn't work, tweak it, and let us know what's going on.
Perfect, be happy to. I'm fully aware that if we do tweak a service level, I know, I don't, I think we'd want to bring it to council first, because council's often is the first person to hear if the grass isn't suitable or the, or the beds are, are not working, but I, I hear your point loud and clear, Deputy Mayor, that we should be bringing those solutions to council for recommendation.
Thank you. So, we have a resolution before us to accept the report. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is Carrie, thank you. Next is Director of Financial Services, dealing with the small adjustments to the HR handbook.
That report Finance 623, entitled Human Resources Employee Handbook Revision, be received for information, and that council endorsed the amended employee handbook for town staff distribution.
Mover in second or, moved by Councilor Chapman, second by Councilor Rozier. Comments? The handbook is only, what, four hundred and forty-some pages? Or is, that's because there is a correction element and then a final element, so maybe it's only two hundred and fifty pages. But I did, I did read all of it. Questions from council? Councilor Chapman.
Through you, worship. I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you. It's been a long time since it was updated, and making it available online for, for staff is a good move, and it's something that sometimes kind of slips away, so thank you.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. If it's not available to the people, it has very little value, and this is a good first step, to make sure that they know what's going on.
Yes, it continues, it contains everything you always wanted to know about everything, but were afraid to ask. I was able to find, one item that I've always been concerned with was the, the level of language that seems to become acceptable these days, and certainly, it does mention language in this report, found an area in there, so I say it has everything, and so thank you for, for collecting all the different items. I guess there was a report on it, let people discuss before the report, so who's doing the report, Ruth, or Heather's doing the report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, through you and to members of council, as you can see, this H R manual has been quite a large project, so Ruth came to the town last January, and this was one of our goals for her to, to complete, so I applaud her for having the tenacity to work through the, wade through the weeds on this one. So, I just, I appreciate her, how she's, how she's done the management review, consolidated everything, you know, worked through the formatting issues, you know, grammar, title changes, all that, added policies that were missing, ripped apart policies that needed to be, and basically, we're really excited to put this with Josh's team, Owen and, and the records assistant, we're really excited to put this into Laserfish, have the acknowledgements in there, have the online forms in there, and so it was really a team effort. Chelsea put together the graphics. Owen consolidated all the, the twenty-five different policies into one two-hundred-page document that we could offer for a red line for council review, so, but, but Ruth was definitely pivotal in this, in executing this in a timely fashion to council, so if you had any specific questions about the policies, Ruth is here to answer them also. Andy and Josh also helped with this policy development.
Council, Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. This is a living, breathing document. We have the technology to make appropriate changes as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Councilor Ozilage.
Yes, your worship. Is that mandatory for all the staff to read it?
Yes.
They, there will be an acknowledgement form at the end of it, which will be housed in Laserfish, so Ruth will be able to be following up with the people that aren't able to acknowledge it, and we'll have a tracking mechanism to make sure that everybody has acknowledged it, so.
I would hate to see an exam on this document. I was trying to test myself, and I said, I just read that, I'm not sure, I better go back and read it again, but seriously, it's, it's there now. It's going to be on Laserfish, that means it's infinitely searchable, correct, when it's online? Anything else? Nothing? All those in favor? Yes, Carrie, thank you. Item eight point five, I think, I haven't skipped anything. Establishment of a Budget Committee.
That report C A O sixteen twenty-three, entitled Establishment Budget Committee, be received for information, and that council approves the draft terms of reference for the Budget Committee and appoints X to serve upon the committee with the mayor.
Well, I heard the resolution. Mover in second or? Councilor Ozilage, Councilor Rozier. Comments on this? Questions? Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. The preparation of the budget is probably the largest single responsibility to the members of council.
responsibility the members of council get involved in on an annual basis. And in my opinion, the, I'm thinking probably the, if not all of the members of council, the majority of members of council would want to be part of that committee. I can't see anybody not wanting to be on a budget committee and actually know what's going on as it's put together. I don't believe three people fairly represents the in-depth discussion that a budget needs to be able to be made at grassroots level. If, my thought would be to have every member of council, unless they don't want to sit on the budget committee, be members of that committee.
Counselor Ozilatch?
Yes, I agree with Deputy Mayor Barber. Because the first council that I was on, the full council was on...
On the budget committee.
And it worked, worked really fine. And I applaud Deputy Mayor Barber to bring forward the, the whole committee, the whole council, be on the budget committee.
Anyone else? My comment would agree with, seeing nobody else here from it, and my comment would agree with that. It might seem a duplication of effort or redundant that we would have the entire, you know, entire council on a budget committee and then have to bring the budget back to council. But I think it is more useful in developing the budget in, in committee, because the, the physical arrangements are such, I think, that it lends more to discussion. We wouldn't be having a committee in this kind of physical setup. We would have a committee by all of us sitting around the same table. And the committee would elect its own chairman. It would not necessarily be the mayor that would be chair of the budget committee, which allows the mayor to talk a lot more if he's not the chair, by the way. And, and also, the, the presentations by staff could be full presentations at the committee stage, and then be smaller presentations at a council stage, now that we have gone through that. So it allows, I think, for a great deal more participation by counselors, a great deal more detailed look at the budget, and a great deal more understanding of how the budget is put together. So with, with your permission, I think we can just change that resolution to say that we develop a budget committee which includes all members of council. That's fine. Comments on that? Can we do that? Counselor Van Rees?
I would just wanted to comment that that makes sense, and I, I agree. Having all of us have input and sit on that and being able to have that open discussion, I think will really help moving forward. So I would support that.
Okay. Further comment? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, can you read the change resolution?
Certainly. This is moved by Counselor Ozilatch and seconded by Counselor De Rosier. And the resolution reads, "That report, CAO 1623, entitled Establishment of the Budget Committee, be received for information in that council approve the draft terms of restment, the draft terms of reference for the budget committee and appoints all members of council to serve upon the committee."
All those in favor? And that is Kerry. Thank you. Next, eight point six, CAO, report on the taxation fairness. I like the title, taxation fairness. Josh?
That report, CAO 1723, entitled Update Taxation Fairness Town of Elmer, be received for information in that Elmer Council requests Elgin County Council to establish a special reserve for any funds recovered through addressing historical issues with payment-in-lue payments.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Van Rees and Counselor Chapman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This report relates to an issue that the town has been publicly advocating on since July, June. It has recently received some media attention, so I'm sure you, you're probably all aware of this larger litigation going on. Going back to June of last year, the town started working to encourage transparency and reporting on the historic issues around payment and lieu. The information received to date indicates that some municipalities would have received significant historic benefits from this issues, and those benefits would have been at the expense of county taxpayers overall. This particularly impacts Elmer and West Elgin as the two municipalities that had very nominal pill issues. And we've already addressed ours, as you can see from the previous reports attached. We don't have detailed information on the other municipalities that would allow us to make determinations on the exact extent of how this has impacted Elmer residents. To explain pill rates briefly, they are tax amounts levied on provincial or federal buildings or properties. Here, our issue was around the rail lines, which was a federal property. And those rates are established by legislation and regulation, so they're not discretionary. The federal government explains that these regulations and processes are important to ensure that the public have confidence in the principles that taxation will occur in a fair and equitable manner, and that those principles are upheld. I did have one question to the effect of, of why these intergovernmental transfers on pill properties are not simply provided some tax-exempt status like churches. The easiest way to explain this is that the pills are important to, to uphold that larger requirement that taxation is, is fair and accountable, so that the public has trust in the way taxes are raised. In terms of taxation, there are significant requirements for public transparency around any write-offs. Usually, a write-off would occur through a public report before a council. There's also potential for court orders to change taxation, or council to enact general bylaws that allow residents to enter into payment plans for, for taxes owing to assist. But those would have to be done in public. These processes, of course, are, are public. Even a court decision eventually becomes public record. So staff do believe that there's a direct requirement upon the county to note that this is an issue of significant public interest, as Elmer has done several times now, and one that the public does need to have detailed understanding of to restore confidence in the taxation system. The recommendation being advanced here is that any and all funds recovered through addressing the historic pill issues should be placed in a special reserve. This is to avoid these funds being incorporated into a general surplus and allow for continued public scrutiny of these monies. This really denotes that this is not additional free monies. This is historic overpayments by county taxpayers that should be allocated in a matter that attempts to balance any historic unfairness. It's not recommended in this report, however, council can see from the last report we did on this in September, that staff did mention that, that referenced that council could refer this matter to the Minister of Municipal Affairs. This would be in the form of a request of the minister to investigate and, in, on this issue. I want to outline this to council, simply to highlight that town staff have seen this as a very serious issue for some time. Staff would be supportive if council did decide to directly file a complaint with the ministry at this time and request an investigation, although that's not what the recommendation of the report today is. And with that, I'll try my best to answer any questions. I might rely on Heather as well, too.
Question, counselors? Comments? Thank you for that explanation. Let me, let me provide a little further explanation without using specific names, I guess. What, the amount of money we're looking at is the amount of money that municipalities in the past should have given to the county and didn't, because we don't know why, for a variety of reasons. So the county had less money than they should have been given, which also means that the municipality who didn't give that money had a benefit to its taxpayers because they didn't have to give it. All right? So say municipality X was supposed to give a hundred thousand dollars. They didn't. They kept it, so their tax rate was a hundred thousand dollars less. Now there's an agreement with the county that that hundred thousand dollars, or whatever it is, is going to be given to the county. And I guess your point is that that hundred thousand dollars shouldn't then be allocated evenly across the other municipalities, because we paid the price for that hundred thousand dollars. So that money should be put in a special account to benefit municipality A, like Elmer, and other municipalities. So that's kind of where we're going. Now, when this particular report hits county council, I, of course, have to speak to it, or will be speaking to it, because I'd look kind of stupid if I didn't say anything about it, because Elmer would be one of the municipalities that would benefit from this. And secondly, not the only one, but one of them, that would benefit from them. So I really need council's support on this, and understanding of this before we, we move on it. So questions or further comments on this? You understand? I hope I explained it, sort of. Counselor Van Rees?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that if, one of the options is requesting an investigation, if, but that's not the, one of the options, it's not one of the recommendations, it's one of the options. If we go through with this, but then later on decide that we need to move forward with an investigation, can we do that at a later point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, of course. Elmer's tried to take a, a kind of escalating approach to this. We've initially started to ask, our, our first approach was to ask for transparency and kind of public reporting on this. Then we actually proceeded to file a Freedom of Information request with, with the, the county, which they were quite responsive to and gave us that information quickly. And after that, we did again request, kind of indicate again our intention to see full public reporting and transparency on this. Our, our general concern is that funds recovered, the, the public won't understand the extent of the funds recovered, and that it would go into a year-end surplus and just go into a general reserve at the county. And we wouldn't receive further public ability to comment upon this. So if this goes up to, to county council, and the, county council doesn't, decides not to establish this reserve, that they ultimately control anyways, or, or to do some form of public reporting to, to, to ensure that the residents, not only of Elmer, but of all of Elgin County know about this, then I, I think we're left with the kind of only option of, of saying that this would be a complaint to the, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs that would come in and review the processes and the county's handling of this issue.
Thank you. Gives me a better understanding of how that process will work.
How that process will work? At the provincial level, I think you're asking, right? How the process would work at the provincial level?
Yeah, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the, it would be at the minister's discretion whether or not to, to formally take a look into this matter. Certainly, there are, as our ongoing advocacy for this, we hope would be a big factor in the fact that the minister would look at it. But we certainly hold out hope that the, the county has a plan to make this information public and a plan to, to determine that these funds aren't just an additional surplus to be dumped into some capital project.
Thank you.
Counselor Ozilatch?
Yes, your worship, to Andy. When do we go that route? Would, would, would you end up in litigation?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we, we aren't in, in litigation at all with the county. We've addressed our pill rates. The, if we filed a, if we did, if council did decide to file a complaint with the minister on this, it would be upon the basis that this issue's been mishandled by the county. And they, the, the minister would have to decide whether or not the, the extent of it or the issues around it were pertinent enough to require intervention at the provincial level to review the processes of the county.
Okay. Just to be clear, the amounts, although they may not be accurate, the amounts that owed by municipalities for underpayment of pills...
Was made public by Elmer, I guess, last summer.
Those amounts were made public as part of a report to this council. It wasn't picked up by the press anywhere, I don't think. I don't think it's been reported. So there's no issue in terms of, you know, investigating who owes what. It's there already. This report will, would, would ask company to set aside any money of repayment from the municipalities that didn't pay up the full pills amount into a special account to be used for those who did pay up, basically. Right? Further questions? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor? That is Kerry. Thank you. Oh, taxi. Eight point seven. This is a report on facility condition assessment. Josh?
That report, Clerk 2123, entitled Facility Condition Assessment Works, Town Hall, Old Town Hall, and Public Works Office and Shop, be received for information in that council directs staff to work with the town-appointed engineer, GM Blue Plan Engineering, to facilitate facility condition assessments for Town Hall, Old Town Hall, and the Public Works Office and Shop for the quoted amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars plus HST.
Mover and seconder? Deputy Mayor Barber and Counselor Chapman? Discussion? Deputy Mayor Barber?
Thank you, worship. Just a quick confirmation. The renovations to this portion of Town Hall and the, the addition of the handicapped access off Center Street, is the Town Hall at least compliant with accessibility requirements as of today?
Through your worship and to Deputy Mayor Barber, yes, I can confirm that we are fully AODA compliant in that the, the renovation works at twenty-five Center Street where we sit right now, have properly integrated the accessible washroom that council had installed in two thousand and sixteen, and that we were fully compliant with that legislation, yes.
Thank you. Any other question? I do have one. I remember at the all candidates meeting for the election, there was a question about consultants. In all candidates' rest, would you, you know, accept a consultant? I think everybody said no. Is this a consultant that we're paying twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, or is it the only way to go?
Certainly, through you, your worship. And to answer that question, I, I will confirm that this, this could be considered a consultant. This is our contracted external engineering firm. So the town does have an ongoing relationship with GM Blue Plan. The reason that there's specific expertise is required on a project like this has to do with them being subject matter experts and giving us high-quality advice on projects that cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, in, in some circumstances, and historically, there have been instances where facility condition assessments haven't been undertaken. And what that can lead to is capital plans that don't adequately represent our future capital needs. So a good example of that would be on an, you know, an HVAC unit at Town Hall. We can, you know, send the chief building official or send operations staff to look at an HVAC unit and to maintain it. But ultimately, we're, you know, we don't employ subject matter experts at the town that are trained HVAC technicians to assess the lifespan of an HVAC unit and to properly forecast costs. And, you know, we're talking about equipment or, or assets rather that, again, end up costing, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. And having a good outlook on what the anticipated lifespan is so that we can properly save for the replacement in the future ultimately saves us money in the long term. So really, what working with this consultant does is it eliminates the guesswork in our facility management plan. And facility condition assessments are, are an industry standard. They're, they're proven to ultimately lead to cost savings when it comes to municipal facility management and capital planning.
Thank you very much, Josh. And, and thank you for, for not, I, I didn't talk to Josh about this beforehand, so I blindsided him a bit about this question. So that was a very good answer. Thank you very much. And I think that's the same kind of answer that when, when we are talking about the community complex, the East Elgin Command, Community Complex, we, we have never had that kind of facility examination. It's exactly what we need, consultants or not. It's exactly what we need. So thank you very much. Any other comment or question of this? Counselor Ozilatch?
Yes, your worship, to Josh. Why isn't the police station in the far hall included?
Through your worship and to Counselor Ozilatch. So council had awarded those projects previously with another, historically, we had worked with a different vendor. So the, we had done them separately just because the way that the years lined up... them separately just because the way that the years lined up, they were due last year, and then these facilities are due this year. So historically, we've done it every decade.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Eight point eight, Director of Corporate Services and Clerk, the BIA appointment.
That report, Clerk 1823, entitled Town of Elmer Business Improvement Area Appointment Recommendations Be Received For Information, and that council approves the appointment of Betty Tykrobe, representing Butter Me Up Soap Company, Nancy Thiessen, representing Fancy Nails and Spa, Kevin Cross, representing Durkey's, Kim Miller, representing Miller's Your Independent Grocer, and Janine Toth, representing Showcase East Elgin Realty, to the Elmer Business Improvement Area. And further, that council considers giving three readings to the future bylaw amending the Appointment Bylaw 3822.
Mover and seconder? Deputy Mayor Barber and Counselor Rawhy. Questions, comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Eight point eight, Director of Corporate Services, tilling of vacant future development lands, Josh.
That report, Clerk 2223, entitled Tilling of Vacant Future Development Lands Lease Agreement Contract Extension Be Received For Information, and that council considers giving three readings to the bylaw authorizing the signing of a farm lease agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Nathan Sarlous for part lots 84 and 85, concession north of Talbot Road, Malahide, north of Part 1, 11R 10343, except Part 1, 11R 10629, Part 1, 11R 10343, save and accept Part 1, 11R 10760, Elmer being pinned 353040393LT, and finally pinned 353040397.
Thank you. Mover and seconder? Move by Counselor Chapman, second by Counselor Rawhy. Questions, comments? Counselor Rawhy.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a pretty fair price for the dirt. I actually saw someone stocking it yesterday when I was bringing the corn load into ingredient, or to the ethanol plant. So it is nice dirt, but it's not big. I think that's a fair price for Ross and for the renter.
Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you. The land area is certainly irregular and it's shrinking. Can we just have a Coles Notes version of how it works if a developer comes along and buys a section of, I know it's in the report, but just how it works if a section of land is taken off that chunk?
Certainly, through your worship and to Deputy Mayor Barber, within the terms of the lease agreement, there is an early exit clause for the benefit of both parties. So again, this is a leasur that's well aware that the town is actively marketing the lands that are being leased for agricultural purposes. At one point, the parcel was 31.3 acres, now we're down to just under 20. So in the event that we do sell more land in the future, there's time periods within the lease agreement where we would give notice of our intention to terminate the lease agreement, and the town would ultimately be responsible for compensating the leasur for their inputs on the land. So this would have to do with, you know, seed, with fertilizer, with those types of inputs. As long as we're provided with receipts, we would compensate the leasur back for those. And I will mention as well, that type of clause within this lease agreement does, it ultimately is reflected in the, in the per acre price of our, of our agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Item nine, new business and matters of urgency. Seeing none. Bring ten, bylaws and proceedings.
The additional report, sorry. Just got the addendum. Just eight point ten.
Oh, yes, I've forgotten we-
Additional report.
So I'll just read the recommendation. That report, Clerk 2323, entitled Earth Special Shareholder Meeting Voting Representative and Attendance List Be Received For Information, and that council designates X, so we're looking for designate, as the town representative for the purpose of casting a vote at the March 23, March 23, 2023 Special Shareholder Meeting. And further, that council directs staff to take the necessary follow-up actions to communicate representative and attendance-related information to the Earth Board Corporate Secretary prior to the March 17, 2023 deadline.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Oslach and Counselor De Rosiers. Question, Josh, where it says the other representatives besides the voting one, that means that all of council is essentially invited, is that correct?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, all of council are invited. We are looking for RSVPs before the end of the week, so if anybody is interested in attending, please let Owen, Andy, or myself know. So that we can reflect that. Really, we've received a request to designate a representative for the purpose of casting a vote on behalf of the town, so we're looking for that information, who our voting representative will be, and then also a list of attendees that, so members of council that wish to attend the March 23 special meeting for shareholders.
We do have a representative at Earth at the moment, but the voting representative has to be on council for this particular meeting. Generally, historically, it is the mayor, and I would not decline the nomination to be a representative to vote at that particular meeting. Counselor Oslach.
Yes, your worship, I agree.
We need a, do we need nomination, I guess, or can we just add my name to the resolution?
Through you, Mr. Chair, with the permission of the mover and the seconder, which is Counselor Oslach and Counselor De Rosiers, we could fill that blank in on the resolution and proceed.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. So I will be the representative then. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Sorry for forgetting. Great, nine, new business and matters of urgency. Reading of bylaws and proceedings thereon, consider giving third and final reading to Josh. Ten, I think that's 1011, right? Is that where we at?
We'll just have Counselor Van Rees leave.
Right, I think, but yeah, Counselor Van Rees has declared pecuniary interest in these items, so thank you very much for leaving. Ten one one.
That council gives three readings to and approves bylaw 1723, being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Inclusive Communities Consulting in Life Skills for the Provision of Crossing Guard Services, and bylaw 1823, being a bylaw to authorize the signing of a farm lease agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Elmer and Nathan Sarlous, and finally, bylaw 1923, being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of council at the regular council meeting held on March 1, 2023.
Yeah, we missed 12 times, okay. You've heard the resolution, questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is carried. Didn't I get a mover and a seconder? I'm sorry, I ran too fast. So let's back up a bit, we're looking again at the 10.3, and I won't have Josh read them again. You got a mover and a seconder on that? Move by Counselor De Rosiers and second by Counselor Chapman. Now, let's vote again. All those in favor? Thank you very much. That's my third mistake tonight. After the fourth one, I get shot.
I did that one, my apologies.
You can ask Counselor Van-
We're going back to it now.
We're going back, we just missed that one.
We got Counselor Van Rees back.
Counselor Van Rees back. We do have now 10.1, council consider giving third and final reading to bylaw 1223.
That council gives third and final reading to the bylaw 1223, being a bylaw to amend bylaw number 5799, which is the zoning bylaw of the Town of Elmer, and this is respecting the Willow Run subdivision.
Mover and seconder? Counselor Chapman, Counselor De Rosiers. Comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it is carried, thank you. We have inquiries by members. No inquiries by members. Statements and committed reports? Counselor Oslach.
Yes, your worship. With the Volkswagen plant coming to the St. Thomas, it will benefit Elmer and newer, I had a newer industrial park. Hopefully.
Certainly, I would think. Deputy Mayor Barber.
Thank you, worship. Two things. The Elmer Legion recently sponsored a speaking contest for grades one through grade 12. Participants were down. Unfortunately, Elmer is the last local legion that is sponsoring the public speaking contest. For the people at home with kids from grade one to grade 12, even if your school isn't sponsoring or participating as a school in the public speaking next year, I would encourage the parents to work with their kids and consider participating on that particular day. Public speaking is important for the growth of a child's well-being in today's environment, and it's just a great way for the kids to learn. Secondly, the province of Ontario recently added two other types of cancer to those cancers, and now it's about 12 that they actually provide WSIB coverage for, for volunteer firefighters that incur a number of different types of cancer. If you, as a volunteer or survivors, have gone through cancers of those types, certainly check with the chief or your chief in the area that you lived. WSIB may provide coverage for you or your survivors. And cancer sucks, but to have help of a financial nature because of your commitment as a volunteer is certainly deserving.
Thank you for that comment. Do you have another comment, Counselor Oslach?
Yeah, your worship. Comment for Pete, Deputy Mayor Barber. I think the Legion is going to hold the public speaking contest only one more year. We're going to see how it goes next year, and we're the only branch in our zone, we have eight branches in our zone, including London, and we're all the only branch that holds public speaking. We're going to hold it for one more year.
Thank you. Anyone else? The next item is, part of the mayor, I do have a few things, surprised, to say. I attended the Family Central Awareness Dinner in the first part of March, I can't think of the exact date now, but since the last election, it was held at the Bradley Street Church of God, who supports the Family Central in many ways, and certainly, a great number of people were there, 160, I think, had a dinner, which helped support the Family Central. And I take that as a occasion to say, to remind you of the great job that Family Central does in terms of food relief, in terms of homelessness, and in terms of helping families in this area. Secondly, I'm a member of the Health Recruitment Partnership, which is a committee, with a committee of county, a county committee and a City of St. Thomas committee, and I mention it because health recruitment is a big deal right now, and I just want to point out, we're doing everything we can to try and bring doctors to Elgin County, but it is, you know, a problem across Ontario, not just this area. Doctors are in very, very short supply, so trying to work with the government to allow doctors from other countries to qualify more easily. And that was one of the discussions we also had, that Andy and I had with Karen Vecchio not that long ago, I think it was just this week, Monday, we had to visit, she came here to talk to us, and we talked about health concerns, we also talked about infrastructure support, which is important for Elmer as well, because there's money, there's federal money there, and hopefully, we, you know, get, we get some of that for the money that we're asking for the complex, and also that we probably will be asking for a swimming pool. Anyway, we had a long discussion with Karen Vecchio. I had one earlier with Rob Fleck, and we went through the same kinds of things. County Council was yesterday, they talked about impact, County Council, and the question, of course, that was asked of impact, again, when are you going to have the new assessments out? And they had no, certainly aren't going to come out this year. What else did County Council talk about? Library fines are-
Reduced further. Eventually, in a couple of years, there'll be no fines at all for library overdues, and that seems to be the way that other library areas are going, so we're kind of no different from that. We took a look at parking fines, and I was amazed that there were actually 30-some pages of parking fines listed in terms of the parking fines bylaws for this area. And I was struck with one of them, one of them being, I don't want to belabor this too much, but one of them being that it really, you get a $35 fine, I think it's $35, don't quote me on that, but I think it's $35, for parking more than .15 meter from the curb. And I suggested to County Council at that time, if we actually hired somebody to do that in Elmer, we probably could have no taxes whatsoever, we'd just have fines on people parking along. .15 is only six inches from the curb. Yeah, County Council budget's 92.6 million for County Council, amazing figure. I wanted to say, 22 million of that is capital, more than $10 million for roads. And of course, we don't have many roads that are county roads in Elmer, I believe we have maybe four kilometers, something like that, of roads. So we don't get a lot of money spent, but I guess all roads lead to Rome, in this case, Elmer. The levy, the county levy is 3.76 percent, so they're not that far. Anyway, that was the part of the mayor, notice of motion, is there any notice of motion? Motion to move into closed.
That council moves into a meeting closed to the public at 8:23 PM to discuss the following matters. Chief Administrative Officer Report CAO 1823, and this is an employee-related matter, and that item's closed to the public pursuant to Section 239-2B of the Municipal Act as amended as the subject matter pertains to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. We've got Chief Administrative Officer Report CAO 1923, in which is a property update respecting Aim Park, and that item's closed to the public pursuant to Section 239-2C of the Municipal Act as amended as the subject matter pertains to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. And finally, Director of Corporate Services Clerk, Report Clerk 2023, and that's a confidential update on 105 White Street, Elmer, and that item's closed to the public pursuant to Section 239-2C of the Municipal Act as amended as the subject matter pertains to a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board.
Thank you. Mover and seconder? Counselor Van Rees and Counselor De Rosiers. All those in favor? That's carried, and we'll take a brief recess before we go into close. Thank you.
So the deputy clerks confirmed that we're back online.
Okay.
So we'll read the resolution. That council rise from the meeting closed to the public at 8:57 PM. In reports the following, that council gave direction to the chief administrative officer regarding report CAO 1823 employee related matter. Council gave direction to the chief administrative officer regarding report CAO 1923 respecting a Aim Park property update. And finally, that council gave direction to the chief administrative officer regarding report clerk 2023 respecting an update on 105 White Street, Elmer.
Motion for in second, there. Counselor Arroyo and Counselor Rozier. Comments, questions? All those in favor? Carried, thank you. Add a adjournment.
That council do now adjourn at 8:58 PM.
Motion for in second, there. Deputy Mayor Barber and Counselor Chapman, I think. All those in favor?
Yay!
Carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.